Morning, everyone. Before I call the meeting to order, let me just recognize a couple of individuals who have a very special award for a city. Steve Smith, Executive Director, and Cindy Melton, the Deputy Director, Jackson Madison County Airport Authority. If you two would please stand and let me read about this special award. The award is the Tennessee Airport Management of the Year Award for 2014, about from the Director of the Tennessee Aeronautics. They were chosen on criteria based on how the infrastructure is updated, the projects completed, the overall appearance of the airfield, and how McKellar Sykes Airport has improved in recent years. Every year, all of Tennessee's 65 airports are considered for this statewide award. However, only one wins, and this year, you all won it. Congratulations, Steve. We'll call to order the April 1st, 2014 Meeting of the Jackson City Council. And if you would call on Councilmember Charles Rong to lead us in our invocation and pledge, if you would, please rise.
You can pray with me. Father, as your children, we come to you this morning, giving you all the praise and glory that you deserve. We thank you for your blessings that you have so generously shown to us as a city. I thank you for our mayor, I thank you for this council, for the passion that they have to serve our fellow man. I pray that the actions that this body takes this morning would be those that would be not only beneficial to our city, but more importantly, those that would be pleasing to your eye. Again, we thank you for your love, we thank you for the death of your son, Jesus, on the cross for our sins. In all this, I do pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Neve, I think you can show all council members present this morning. And Item 4 is the approval of minutes of the March 5th, 2014 City Council Meeting. Councilmembers received a copy of those minutes, and if there are no additions or corrections, we will go ahead, no objection, and approve those. Item 5 is the invitation for public comment. I can indicate to the audience that any of you wish to be heard on any item under new business, if you would let me know at that time, I'll be happy to call on you and let you come up and speak before the council. We have a number of proclamations this morning, and while I come down to the podium, I'm going to ask Coach Fuller, if he would, to bring the entire Southside Basketball Team up front, line them up across the front. We also have Anita Tucker, and I think Dr. Ruffin is here this morning. If she is, if y'all would just come up and join the team. Y'all come up and coach, if you'd, line them up right across the front. the players how extremely proud we are of you all. The breadth of your championship goes far beyond your team, goes far beyond Southside High School. It goes and surrounds our city, surrounds our county, surrounds West Tennessee. So it was indeed a profound victory. Extremely proud of each of you, and your sportsmanship was outstanding, and in my estimation, you were wonderful ambassadors representing this city. We're extremely proud of you. And we have a proclamation this morning that I'm going to read and present to Coach Fuller. And then also, we have a special gift for all the players and Ms. Tucker, that I'm going to ask our Vice Mayor to come down when we get ready to do that and make that presentation for you, okay? And I'll, after I read the proclamation, Coach, I'll let you come up and say a few words, and Tucker, if you'd like to, and introduce the players and the coaches to us. This is a proclamation whereas the Southside High School Basketball Team is honored this day for displaying the high standards of performance, sportsmanship, and fair play. And whereas with the support and encouragement of the school's administration, faculty, staff, parents, and fans, the Hawks won the 2014 Boys Basketball Class AA State Championship for the first time in school history. And whereas the team achieved the 14 AA District Championship and Region 7 AA Championship, and whereas the Hawks won 32 games and lost two during the 2013-14 season, and were champions of the 27th Annual Popper Bluff, Missouri Showdown. And whereas over the past three years, the team has achieved the exceptional combined record of 77 wins and nine losses. Whereas four Southside Team Players were played, were named to the 2014 All-State Tournament Team, with one Southside Team Player was named the Most Valuable Player of the 2014 State Tournament. And whereas Hawk Basketball Coaches Devon Fuller, Stanley Smith, Samuel Greer, Brent McNeil, and Adrian Comer provided outstanding coaching expertise, which enabled the team to possess the confidence and skills to play to the best of their abilities. Now therefore, I gerrigous Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 1st, 2014, as Southside High School Hawks Championship Day, and urge all citizens to recognize this great accomplishment. Let's give them a big hand. They win. Coach Fuller, if you would, just come up and speak to the crowd and introduce your players and coaches, if you would.
On behalf of, on behalf of Southside Administration, we do appreciate the award, the proclamation that you've given us today. We do represent this city to the fullest. It's community-based, and what we did for the whole city of Jackson is what we try to do all the time. I think that our community supports us in every way, and we appreciate that very much. To my left, guys, when I call your names, can you stand forward and then step back? Tyler Henning, Dee Cruz, Chris McNeil, Jordan Reed, Ricky Beard, Jalen Barford, Rashad Johnson, Malik Keats.
MVP.
Devonte Benson, our wonderful managers, Sarah Robertson, Hope Conley, Teranda Smith, Colin Hefner, Kobe Spann, Tariqa Smith, Zach Brown, Caleb Murphy, our coaches, Stanley Smith, Adrian Comer, and our principal, Ms. Anita Tucker.
We're so excited to be here today. It was a fun, fun time. It was a very nerve-wracking time, but I can tell you this, the boys put in a lot of hard work. It's not a vacation. They get to eat breakfast, yeah, and then they go practice, and then they get to eat lunch, and then they go to the gym, and they play, and we eat, and we go to bed. So the fun part came on Saturday night. We felt like we really won two championships when we beat CPA over Friday night, but I reminded them when we went to eat, it's not over, it's not over. And what was so much fun for me, being an alumni of Southside High School and having played basketball many years ago, I love basketball, I love Southside High School, but it was seeing the community and the alumni and the fans. When we went up there, I mean, they're just amazed at what we bring to them when we come. And so I, we're having a lot of fun right now. This is relaxed time when we get to go and be recognized. We'll be at Jump Start Jackson on Saturday with the Hall of Fame banquet. It's lots of fun now, and these guys have earned every bit of it. So I thank y'all for allowing them to be recognized today.
Vice Mayor, here she is. If you would come up, we have a special gift for you guys. Tammy's got, for you guys, we have a lapel pin that we hope, as you wear it or look at it, that it will bring back fond memories of this day of being recognized, and to remind you of your state championship, in addition to that big, huge trophy that helps sit on the counter. I will tell you, I was watching that final game, and I came out of the chair, straight up, three or four times, scared everybody in the house to death, the dogs started barking. But it was a wonderful game, and we appreciate, appreciate y'all so much and what you've done for our city and our county in West Tennessee. It's quite an achievement. And again, you're getting a lapel pin. The girls and Ms. Tucker will get a stick pin, and this lapel pin contains the official seal of the City of Jackson, Tennessee. Our next proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I have, I think we have Lisa Smith here in the audience. Lisa, if you'd come up, and I'll let you, after I present the proclamation, introduce those that are with you. Thank y'all for being here. It's a proclamation whereas we recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem that changes life's path for nearly 4 million of our nation's children annually. Whereas this problem has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, respects no racial, religious, socioeconomic, and geographic boundaries. And whereas we're taking action to educate the public on child abuse and its causes. Whereas the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse wants to enlist parents and community members to join the battle of preventing and dealing with child abuse to improve the quality of family life for children and families. Now therefore, I gerrigous Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2014, as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to take action to better understand, recognize, and respond to this grievous problem. Now we further commend the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse for its continuous success in helping families break free from the cycle of abuse, and urge full public support of the mission, protect children. And witness whereof, we're here to set our hands and cause the seals of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Madison County to be affixed this first day of April, 2014. Lisa, it's an honor for me to present this to you. Thank you all for what you do. I'll let you say a few words and introduce your guests.
Well, on behalf of the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center, we just want to thank you so much for the support of this community. With the incidence of child abuse exceeding that of the rate of cancer in our country, it is a community, it takes the whole community to combat what we are trying to do, is to protect our children. For the month of April, our mission will be protect children, and so you will see the blue ribbons throughout the city. We hope that when you have the opportunity to share the problem in our, not only in our nation, but in our city as well, we hope that you will take that opportunity. We know that we are supported by our community, by our city and by our county, and we thank you very much for that. I have with me today one of our partners, Doritah Bryce, she's with the Department of Children's Services. Thomas Mitchell is our therapist at the Child Advocacy Center. Paul Kip is an AmeriCorps volunteer, and Monica Goodman is one of our forensic interviews, interviewers. And thank you again very much for this opportunity.
Next proclamation, recognize equal payday, and we have Jen Banham, President of the Jackson Madison County Business Professional Women's Organization. I know she has some additional members with her. If y'all will come on up, girls, and I'll let, then introduce you all after I read the proclamation and make it a part of this meeting. It's a proclamation whereas 51 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act entitled 7 of the Civil Rights Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay differentials. Whereas according to statistics by the Institute for Women's Policy Research, year-round full-time working women in 2012 earned only 77% of the earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. Whereas graduating to a pay gap, the earnings of women and men one year after college graduation by the American Association of University Women, published in 2012, establishes a 5% pay gap between female and male college graduates who are working full-time one year after graduation. The report, which uses the latest national representative data, compares and applies to apples to apples by looking at the pay gap after controlling for various factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation, college major, and hours worked. It also examines one immediate effect that the pay gap has on many women, the heavy burden of student loan debt. Whereas 2012 AAUW research also establishes that the pay gap widens over time, so that by age 65, women earn 65% of what their male peers earn. Whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue cost or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April 8th, symbolizes the time in the next year in which the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, I gerrigous Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 8th, 2014, as Equal Pay Day in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourages business to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. And witness whereof, we're here to set our hands and cause the seal to the City of Jackson and County of Madison, Tennessee, to be affixed this 8th of April, 2014. Girls, this is a joint proclamation from the city and county. Again, thank you, thank you for what you do. Jen, let me present it to you and let you say a few words and introduce your guests.
Thank you, Mayor Gis. On behalf of Jackson area business professional women, I accept this proclamation. The past 10 years, the wage gap hasn't budged. Women make, women who work full-time make 77 cents for every dollar of their male counterparts. With me today have Jackie Utley, Beth Bates, Jackie Hillman, and Mary Jo Millbrooks. Thank you for this recognition.
I'm gonna need a garbage can up here for all these notes before it's over. The next one we're excited about, expect all of you to be a part of it, which I know you will, because you're all pumped up about Jump Start Jackson. We have Roger Jawors, Coordinator of the Tennessee Commission on Children and Youth, Sandy McDermott, Superintendent of Recreation, and Net Wilson, Coordinator of School Health, Director for the Jackson Madison County School System, and Tony Black, Recreation Parks Department. If you all come up and let me get Jump Start Jackson underway, of which I know the council will be very enthusiastic about and be first in line to make that walk. It's a proclamation whereas physical inactivity, obesity, and poor diet have become major preventable health issues throughout the United States. And whereas poor diet and lack of physical activity is second only to smoking as the leading cause of death in the United States. And whereas the state of Tennessee ranks as one of the highest states in the incidence of obesity and poor physical fitness. And whereas the City of Jackson, County of Madison, and the Jackson Madison County School System have partnered to improve physical fitness, diet, health, and wellness in our community through the Jump Start Jackson Initiative. And now therefore, I gerrigous Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 5th, 2014, as Jump Start Jackson Community Wellness Day. And in witness whereof, we're here to set our hands and cause the seals of the City of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, to be affixed this first day of April, 2014. So let me present this to you all. I know you worked hard on getting this event together. Net, you want to come up and accept it? You draw the short straw, girl.
I know. I begged them, someone else to come up and speak, but I do thank the mayor for his support for the last eight years. This will be our eighth walk. It's hard to believe time has passed so quickly. We've made great strides in this community about creating a healthier Jackson. I do encourage all of you, and especially our council members, please come out and join us this Saturday at the Carl Perkins Civic Center. Registration begins at 9:00 and the walk at 10:00. And as Ms. Tucker said, we will be recognizing the Southside Basketball Team as other groups. We've got some other students to perform, so please come out and join us, and thank you again, Mayor Gis.
Yeah, I think right after our council meeting, we're going to have a function right outside in the lobby, and this is to honor the Month of Miracles. So Monique, if you'll come up and accept this, if you haven't got your project in for the month of April, National Volunteer Month, it's all about people helping people. Monique's done a great job of this and has a great bunch of projects and people lined up to help her. Monica, don't be shy. Good, thank you. It's a proclamation whereas April, 2014, is National Volunteer Month, and one of the best ways to connect your community and make it a better place. Volunteering allows you to dedicate your time as a volunteer, helping you to connect new friends, expand your network, and boost your social skills. And whereas volunteering is a great way to meet new people, volunteering also strengthens your ties to the community and broadens your support network, exposing you to people with common interests, neighborhood resources, fun and fulfilling activities. Whereas volunteering can provide a healthy boost to your self-confidence, self-esteem, and life satisfaction. You're doing good for others in the community, which provides a natural sense of accomplishment. Your role as a volunteer can also give you a sense of pride and identity, and the better you feel about yourself, the more likely you are to have a positive view of your life and future goals. Whereas some people are naturally outgoing, others are shy and have a hard time meeting new people. Volunteering gives you the opportunity to practice and develop your social skills since you're meeting regularly with a group of people with common interests. Once you have momentum, it's easier to branch out and make more friends and contacts. And whereas reducing the risk of depression is another important benefit of volunteering. A key risk factor for depression is social isolation, and statistics have shown that volunteering helps combat depression. Volunteering keeps you in regular contact with others and helps you develop a solid support system, which in turn protects you against stress and depression when you're going through challenging times. Now therefore, I gerrigous Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim April, 2014, as the Month of Miracles, and urge all citizens to volunteer during the month and help make the City of Jackson, Tennessee, a better place by reaching out to help others. Monique, thank you for everything you do. Let me present this to you, and you come up and tell these folks what they can do.
For the sake of time and my voice, I will save my comments and invite you all to the kickoff event immediately following the city council meeting. You'll be able to meet Miracle Man, we'll give out t-shirts, and we'll have light refreshments. So you all just hang around after city council. Mayor, thank you so much.
This proclamation is to honor National Service Recognition Day, and we have Laura Roberts, a volunteer with AmeriCorps Vista, if she would come up and accept this proclamation. Anybody here? Yeah, she is. Good morning. Thank you for being here. It's a proclamation whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas AmeriCorps members address the most pressing challenges facing our city as a nation, from educating students for jobs for the 21st century, and supporting veterans and military families to preserve the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunities by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, including eight in Jackson, Tennessee, bolstering civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our city's economic and social well-being. And whereas nine AmeriCorps members serve in Jackson, providing vital support to city residents, improving the quality of life in our city. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, including more than 224,000 in cash resources and 627,000 in non-cash resources in Jackson. And whereas AmeriCorps members demonstrate commitment, dedication, patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas a corporation for national and community service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joined with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service, April 1st, 2014. Now therefore, I gerrigous Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 1st, 2014, as National Service Recognition Day. our city, and thank those who serve and find ways to give back to their communities. That's an honor for me to present this to you, and thank you for everything you do for our city. Come up.
I just want to thank everyone for allowing us to be here, and there are several other members here today that didn't come up. I want to thank them for their service, and just to the city of Jackson for fostering community service, and us all working together just to make poverty not exist anymore. So appreciate it, and thank you.
Trying to get my bookkeeping done in the corner. Next is honoring Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we have some special guests here which will come up. I know Lananda Dergan is here with nine eleven dispatch, Sherry Keltner, Madison County Sheriff's Department, Clint Hand, Tennessee Highway Patrol Dispatch, Tracy Lockard, medical center at E M L, Jackson Medlink, Paul Spencer, and Madison County Fire Dispatch, Monica Moore. It's good to have you all here. Twenty-four-seven operation, folks. Y'all just come up and line up. Come on around here, where we can all see ya. Come around a little bit farther. Paul, we're not gonna let Paul hide behind the post. Okay, this is a proclamation, whereas every day, nine eleven Public Safety Telecommunicators from the city of Jackson Police Department, city of Jackson Fire Department, Madison County Sheriff's Office, Madison County Fire Department, Jackson Medlink, and Tennessee Highway Patrol answers requests for emergency and from the public with professionalism and compassion. Whereas the efforts of these unseen first responders to answer calls for help gather essential information and assure that appropriate assistance is provided of saved innumerable lives. Whereas the work of these nine-one-one Public Safety Telecommunicators is invaluable and deserves public recognition and appreciation. Whereas in order to recognize the high-quality communication services provided by our nine-eleven Public Safety Telecommunicators, the United States Congress designated the second full week in April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas Jackson Madison County hereby honor and commend the nine-one-one Public Safety Telecommunicators for their professionalism, commitment, compassion, steadfast pursuit of their goal of protecting life and property. Now therefore we, Jerry Gess, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of April thirteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and Jackson Madison County, and urge all citizens to honor these men and women for their diligence and professionalism in keeping our communities safe. And we do honor you all for that very much, and thank you for what you do. Who wants to come up and line up? Let's give them a hand if you will. I see she sent a sub this morning, which is a good thing.
I would just like to say that this is just a small few of those that are still
Good to see you all. Appreciate you being here.
working and some of those that are at home sleeping from working last night.
This is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and read this proclamation and make it part
So we work very well together. I didn't, I found this saying, and I don't know if they actually know this or not, but
of the record. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that
it's called the thin gold line. Y'all familiar with that?
sexual violence has widespread and has made public health implications for every community
Between the thin red line, the thin blue line, and the thin white line lies the thin
member of the city of Jackson, county of Madison.
gold line.
And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our communities is seen
The narrowest line represents those who are rarely seen but always heard and appreciated.
by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault
The calm voice in the dark, the heroes behind the scenes, the golden link that holds it
by the time they complete college.
all together, telecommunications they are.
And whereas we must work together to educate our communities about what can be done to
So thank you so much. Thank you.
prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. And whereas Staff and Volunteers of Women's Resource and Rape Assistance Program encourages every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there's a compelling evidence that can we, that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in the city of Jackson, the county of Madison through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas the city of Jackson, the county of Madison strongly support the efforts of the national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better, better address sexual violence. Now therefore we, Jerry Gess, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April, two thousand and fourteen, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to join RAP and all support services programs, and to believe that all community members must be a part of the solution to end sexual violence. And again, it's my honor, thank you all for what you all do, and if you want to, just come up and do us a little bit more.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month is an opportunity for our entire community to underscore our commitment to eliminating the crime of sexual assault, supporting victims, and intervening when appropriate to stop violence. Together we must work together every day to instill a climate that does not tolerate nor ignore sexist behavior, sexual harassment, or sexual assault. These simply have no place in our community. Creating a culture free of sexual assault requires establishing an environment where dignity and respect is afforded to all and where diversity is celebrated as one of our greatest assets, where men and boys courageously speak up and speak out for women and girls. We are strong because of, because of our faith, our values, and our commitment to our community. By drawing on these strengths, we can and we must stop sexual violence in Jackson Madison County. Darrell John Sutuck, who was our director, sends her regards in her absence. I'm Mamie Hutcherson, the Director of Operations and Finance of RAP, and this is Bridget Lockett, our Shelter Plus Manager. We have teal ribbons, that's the color for Sexual Assault Awareness Month for everyone. We're gonna give the council first, and we'll have them at the back door for you. Thank you very much.
Okay, after a few wise cracks from council, we'll, we'll proceed to item seven, which is the first reading. Consideration of Ordinance to Rezone Properties Located at thirty-nine Millmaster Drive, one oh eight Miller Avenue, and one eighteen Miller Avenue from I two Light Industrial District to I O Wholesale and Warehousing District containing six point oh acres, more or less, submitted by Journey Properties. Stan?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. The purpose of this rezoning is to accommodate the expansion plans of Millmaster, who is located in, down in this area. They are wanting to expand their building. The current zoning requires more building setback, it wouldn't allow them to expand the way they need to, so this zoning accomplishes that, and they are, they have presented this to us, and we have sent it to the Planning Commission. They are recommending approval of it to you this morning.
Okay, before we, before we take a motion, let me just indicate this is an ordinance on first reading. It calls for a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing to see if there's anyone present who would like to be heard on this matter in, in speaking in support or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion, and a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
Can the vote be unanimous?
Okay, item eight is second reading, consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at twenty-six thirteen, twenty-six seventeen, North Highland Avenue from RS One Single Family Residential District to B four General Business District containing point four six acres, more or less submitted by Jackson Motor Company. Council has a motion for approval and a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
Can the vote be unanimous?
Welcome back.
Congratulations, Al. That was a, we didn't know if that was gonna happen or not. Numbered item two is presentation with the Jackson Arts Council. Melinda, Jan Baud, and Monty Jones, if you could come up. Thank you guys for being here, and I think Melinda, yeah.
Good morning, Mayor Gess and council members.
Good morning.
Thank you, Tommy.
Steve, if you would, just introduce yourself for the, for the minutes, if you would.
I am Steve Vaper, president-elect of the Jackson Arts Council, and Jan Baud, our current president, was unable to be here, and our executive director, Melinda Hearn, was unable to be here. So I have Monty Jones with me this morning, and what we would simply like to do is just say, on behalf of the Jackson Arts Council, we appreciate this opportunity to thank you for, and express our gratitude for your funding of the Arts Council. We have several folks here, but before I get to who represents the arts in the room, I'd like to recognize Patsy Camp. Patsy, if you would, please stand. Patsy is serving as the executive, on the executive board of the Tennessee Arts Commission as a commissioner and represents them as a secretary, and she's with us this morning. This, Tommy placed the tag, and so I'd like to recognize those in the audience representing a wide variety of the arts here this morning. If you would, please stand.
Our purpose today is, again, to simply say thanks to each of you and let you know that the arts have been working hard in this community for a long time to, to, to strengthen the arts since nineteen, December of nineteen sixty-seven. So we've been around a while. We're closing in on fifty years. We have been re-granting state funds in West Tennessee for more than a decade, so we take these funds very seriously and want to be very responsible with these funds to be sure that they go to benefit all the variety of arts in our community. We are a policy asset group. We do have an impact on the community and provide a wide variety of cultural offerings, educational opportunities, and an economic impact within our community. One other note is in, in the current fiscal year, the Jackson Arts Council granted over a hundred and fif, excuse me, fifteen thousand dollars through a competitive grant program to seven local arts groups and over ten thousand dollars in state funding. This has resulted in over six point eight million dollars contributed to our local economy and over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in local government revenue. With that said, I'll introduce Monty Jones, our VP of Government Relations.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As Steve mentioned, we support a lot of different things, and we're the conduit for funding to these different organizations, and if you've ever attended the Jackson Symphony, Starlight Symphony, or the Ballet Arts Nutcracker, or even the Shannon Street Music Fest, or a production of the Jackson Theater Guild, then you've personally experienced and supported what we support through the Arts Council. And let me just say thank you for that, and thank you so much for your service to the city of Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Very much appreciate what the Arts Council does. I know you all have a very active board, and we appreciate it.
Mayor, can I make one comment?
Sure.
The two prefaces that I took to the Peter Pan Ballet last week, of course, now they won't ballet lessons, so that's gonna cost me money. I think that was the most professional production that I have ever seen anywhere. I was truly amazed by that production. So much talent and so much professionalism. It was outstanding.
Was a good production. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here to inform the council. Item three, the new business, consideration to payment of ADA plants attorneys. They negotiated fee settlement for the ADA lawsuit, and we have representatives from our city attorney's office and from Kaiser, Rainey, and Bell. Thank you for being here. If you would, just kind of give the council a brief overview of what we're dealing with here and how long it's been going on.
Good morning, Council. My name is Nathan Shelby, and I'm from Rainey, Kaiser, Revere, and Bell. We were retained by the municipal league to defend the city in ADA lawsuit brought by Mr. Oliver that has been going on for over ten years. If y'all recall, we were here before you a couple months ago with the final settlement decree laying out the timeframe to bring all of the city in compliance with the ADA. At that time, we brought up that attorney's fees are an issue, and pursuant to statute, the city owes the plaintiffs reasonable attorney's fees for their work. The attorney's fees affidavits that we've received from opposing counsel go back to two thousand and six. Those fees totaled a hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, and those are based on two hundred and fifty dollars per hour. And I know many of you may know, the federal court would approve that rate. In fact, recently, higher rates than two fifty an hour have been approved by the federal court. We were able to negotiate with opposing counsel, subject to this council's approval, for payment of their attorney's fees at ninety-seven thousand dollars. So we were able to bring that down from approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to ninety-seven thousand dollars pending your approval. And this approval and payment of these attorney's fees will close the litigated portion of this suit. We still have compliance reports that'll be due yearly, but the litigation itself will be open, and I'll invite any questions you all may have.
Nathan, this whole process started how long ago?
Two thousand and three, I believe.
I have a question. Nathan, how many hours does that represent?
The total, they, they submitted two separate affidavits, so just one attorney is two hun, or two hundred and eighty hours, and that's for Cody Allison and for J. Todd Faulkner. His total hours were one hundred and ninety-two hours of work.
Can you make those affidavits available to, to us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just quickly say, I'm Courtney Reedie from Spragans, Barnett &amp; Cobb, and Mr. Cobb and myself feel like that this is a fair agreement with the other side, with the plaintiff's attorneys, based on more than a decade worth of litigation and the most recent awards from the federal court.
Ms. Chalm? Go ahead. Move to pay the ADA plaintiff's attorney negotiated fee settlement. Okay, we have a motion, have a second, and a discussion from council. Now, council, please vote.
Can the vote be unanimous?
Thank you, thank you all.
And this approval and payment of these attorney's fees will close the litigated portion of this suit. We still have compliance reports that'll be due yearly, but the litigation itself will be, and I'll invite any questions you all may have.
Nathan, this whole process started how long ago?
Two thousand and three, I believe.
I have a question. Nathan, how many hours does that represent?
The total, they, they submitted two separate affidavits, so just one attorney is two hun, or two hundred and eighty hours. And that's for Cody Allison and for J Todd Faulkner. His total hours were one hundred and ninety-two hours of work.
Can you make those affidavits available to, to us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just quickly say, I'm Courtney Reedie from Spragans, Burnett, and Cobb. And Mr. Cobb and myself feel like that this is a fair agreement with the other side, with the plaintiff's attorneys, based on more than a decade worth of litigation and the most recent awards from the federal court.
Mr. Trump? Go ahead. Move to pay the ADA plaintiff's attorney negotiated fee settlement. Okay, we have a motion, have a second, and discussion from council. Not council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Al.
That's one vote I hate.
Item four. Item four, one new business. Consideration of Contract for Production Services for City Events. Ms. White.
Best way I can explain this contract is that the city hires a professional service contractor for lighting and sound for any events that we have at any of our facilities, and also for clients who book our facilities. And you have before you the two proposals that we received. The first line item, if you'll follow along with me, is their hourly rate. And they are guaranteed this rate four hours prior to and four hours after the show. The show rate indicates their rate during the show. I didn't know what a steward was, and after I asked a lot of questions, I found out that would be Chris Bennett. So he is there all the time with the show. And in fact, I believe we have a representative here, Ariel. Ariel here. Would you like to come up here and answer any questions the council might have? Okay, great.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is Ariel, and he works with Chris Bennett.
Council, have any questions about the contract? I think this is something that's recommended by our auditing firm after many years of working with different groups under public venues.
Move to approve CB production design.
Same. Have a motion and a second, and discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item five is consideration of contract for the Jankby Cannon Bridge replacement project.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight votes in favor, one abstaining.
Item six is consideration of contract for East Chester Street Gate Improvement Project.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, when do we start the work?
What is projected? Would we have?
We're gonna get started on pre-construction after today, get the contract signed. And we did make it contingent on T doc concurrence, but we've received that concurrence.
Okay.
Thank you.
We voted on that. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item seven is board appointments. Keep Jacksonville commission, reappointment of Mabel Mason, Tina, and Akeel. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote unanimous.
And under the Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency, the reappointment of Monty Jones.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion. Council, please vote. And under the Jackson Madison County Historic Zoning Commission, the reappointments of Anna Ewing and Jack Wood.
So moved.
Motion, a second. Discussion. Council, please vote. Item eight is our budget amendments.
Good morning. We have three this month. We'll take the first one is an increase to sponsorships for Pringles Park for the OVC tournament in the amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. This will be a draw on fund balance.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
The second one that you have before you today is an increase in some capital items. First, it's the Civic Center Capital needs new flooring in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars. Farmers Market Amphitheater to complete it, twenty-five thousand dollars. Police Support Services, eleven thousand dollars to complete the helicopter outfitting.
I have a question. What kind of new floor for the Miss Tennessee Plaza are we, are we getting? Didn't we redo the stage last year?
We redid the stage. I think this is the Miss America Room. Ms. White and Mr. Dawson are working on that.
We chose hard because it's so expensive and confident. It's much easier to claim it than it is to be in there.
But it is for the Miss America Room, correct?
It is for the Miss, Miss Tennessee, and also for the offices there.
And what about for the amphitheater?
The amphitheater?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson, you wanna address the amphitheater? Well, they want to know what this money's for.
Both. What the money's for, how much we spent on it?
We've got to finish some, put some side down. We're replacing, you go over there, there's a lot of sand over there. We've got to put air conditioning in the, of the office space so that we can tune the area where we have a big investment in musical instruments and sound equipment. We've got to put air and heat in the Duke bathroom that we're abandoning right now, and then the two changing rooms that are two steps up from the base.
And the total amount of the budget for that was ninety-eight thousand, one sixty-four.
Okay.
How much we spent?
Go ahead.
How much have we spent? Prior to this amendment, there's been about sixty thousand that has been spent thus far.
Any other questions on, on any of those? All those included in one amendment?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any questions from council? If not, is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
A motion, a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And the last amendment that we have today is an increase to grants and donations in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. This is for the appropriations given to agencies throughout the year, and we've had a few more requests this year. And again, this will be a draw on fund balance.
So moved.
A motion, a second. Second. Discussion from council.
Do we know which agencies will get those at this time?
Mr. Lefoon keeps that request list and...
You know how many will be given from that amount? Don't know now.
No, we got, we had a couple of requests for that particular fund this year, which was unanticipated. Number one was, was a contribution for the Veteran Cemetery that they've approached every government in West Tennessee to participate, and it just happened to come out, come out of that particular fund. It was not a separate authorization from council, so that's where a lot of it went. Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Second? Or do we? Okay. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
That concludes the budget amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Before we get down to the final item, let me, let me acknowledge we have quite a few people here from, from South Jackson and especially the Beavis community who shares the same concern as many of us have, and that's the, the future of Beavis Mill. And I appreciate each of you being here to show your support. I will acknowledge the fact that, that I know Councilwoman Flitt has a copy of petitions which has been signed and delivered to us, and we will continue to, to keep you updated as to any revelation in that, in that particular issue. We'll be meeting tomorrow with the current owner, current owner since this past January of that particular facility to see, and we have some meetings with the state and national people scheduled, and we're all hopeful, have taken consideration, we do not own the building. Someone else owns the building. But be, but rest assured that we're going to try to do everything we can, because we know it's very meaningful to, to the Beavis community, it's very meaningful to all of Jackson. People live all over the city whose family worked in that mill and have, have been such a part of their lives for so many years. So we appreciate you being here, and, and it's a continued work in progress at this point.
Very, very beneficial to me, 'cause if it wasn't for that Beavis Mill, I wouldn't have the soulmate I got, and I wouldn't have the three beautiful children and eight fantastic grandchildren. I'd probably be who knows where without the, my soulmate. Depending on if that Beavis Mill, the family's probably staying Carroll County.
We, we all, we all know that you married way over your head. Thanks, thanks to Beavis, for sure. But anyway, we, we want y'all, we want to recognize you all and thank you for being here and for your, for your passion for this, and be well assured that we're going to continue to try to, try to work very, work, work very diligently in trying to put something together we can all live with.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Item nine is consideration of invoices over ten thousand.
So moved.
Have a motion, a second. Discussion. Council, please vote. There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.